Well, good evening, everyone. It's seven o'clock and time to get our meeting started. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
... Oh, no.
... I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No, I have downtown plans for last night.
Thank you. I'll do the roll call this evening. Chick?
And then what?
Chick? Thanks. Bronn?
Here.
Instrom's here. Westover is running late with notice. Otto?
Here.
And Thomas?
Yeah.
Thank you. That takes us on to our consent agenda, the minutes and bills. Wayne, do you have any questions on the minutes and bills?
Yeah, I'd like to have the bills polled. I've got a couple of quick questions, if you want me to do that.
Sure.
Okay. There was, I just want to mention that for the super election, Jennifer Carlisle, who was an employee of the township, made the most money, 315 bucks. That's, I guess, for one day, that's pretty good money. And the cost of the township to operate this month is $485,166.30. Thank you.
And that's all you've got for the minutes and bills?
Excuse me?
Anything else on the minutes and bills? Okay. Then I'll make a motion to approve the minutes and bills as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Instrom motioned, and Chick supported. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. On to adopt the balance of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions that we should be made aware of?
Is there any what?
No, ma'am.
Additions or deletions.
No additions or deletions, but there are some documents that are in front of you that are related to items on the agenda.
Yeah. All right. So I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
Thank you. Instrom motioned, and Bronn supported. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion passes. Takes us on to our first call of the public. This is an opportunity for anyone to get up and share your thoughts. We do try to limit you to three minutes, and it is not a question-and-answer time for the board. We can address things at a later time. We have our first speaker, I believe, already. Come on up.
Hello.
Just one. Chick, yeah.
Good evening. Well, this is a beauty of a day in the game of life. Happy to be here. We are blessed to reside in this beautiful township, and I would like to take a moment to thank the voters for permitting me the opportunity to be placed on the November ballot. I thank you very much. Thank you. I have a couple of things I would like to talk about separate. One is smart meters. These are the new meters that they've been putting in the township and the related communities lately. It is possible for our township to possibly pass a resolution to support the right of DTE customers the choice to have an analog meter on their homes, thus avoiding the data mining and privacy invasion of the new smart meter technology. Also, currently, we urge, we can urge our representatives to pass the Michigan House Bill, HB 4916, called the Analog Meter Choice Bill. So that's one issue. I do have a couple of flyers out there, and I handed a few out in here when I came in earlier regarding this. The second issue is, we have been given a fabulous example of an obscenely bloated federal and state government. What if the following example can be an inspiration to citizens, to perhaps get engaged in determining what paths the money confiscated from them takes? Grant money comes from our pockets. The more times money is handled, the more times that it changes hands, the more of this money slips through the fingers, through bureaucracies, in the cracks, and is thus wasted. It costs money to handle money. Is it not corrupt or immoral to confiscate money from the citizens only to dribble some back for uses applied to select projects deemed appropriate by the masters at a hyper-inflated cost, no less? $160,000, the cost of a house for approximately 205-foot squares of sidewalk, a few culverts and a crosswalk. Now, it's probably not necessary to mention that we here at the township could have undoubtedly addressed this subject at a greatly reduced cost, I have no doubt, also sparing us from the indignity of pandering to our masters. This example displays that it is painfully evident and our duty to insist that our representatives must take action to reduce the size and reach of both state and federal governments. Ever-increasing taxes and milledges result in bigger and fatter bureaucracies and an ever-increasing preponderance of these types of examples. Perhaps thriftiness we can bring back into our dialogue. Something to think about. $160,000 is very expensive. The result looks nice, but like I say, I'm sure we could have done ourselves and not beholden to these bureaucracies. Anyway, I wanted to thank everybody for being here, and I know this is kind of heavy, but smile, life is good. Thank you.
Don, can you state your name and address for the record?
Thank you so much. My name is Ton Beliger, and I live on Earhart Road, between six and seven mile. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Okay, do we, our next speaker, come on up.
I have decided to share a couple of thoughts. The last couple of board meetings, Mr. Docket has asked that we have a statement on the van curler costs at this point, and I'm kind of confused as to why somebody doesn't really say, "Okay, that's fine," as a courtesy to the taxpayers. There are, I'm sure, there are people that support van curler, there are people that don't, but it would be nice, with the expected amount of money that goes into the van curler costs, that us taxpayers get to see what's been accumulated up to this point. So that was what I was asking, is, gee, maybe you ought to think about it, maybe we could do that. I'm sure it's a whole lot easier than trying to pick it all out of the treasurer's report. I have looked over that, and I decided that it wasn't the way to go. The other thought I had is, we have a lot of projects that are started, not too many complete, and I, it looks like from the agenda and Howard's report that we're going to be rolling out quite a few more, and I was just hoping that we might be able to put a little bit of a hold on that until we get some of the backlog caught up. And last but not least, Ian Howard's management report, he mentioned some boundary issues in the surveys, and seems to think they're not a whole lot of a problem. I haven't had a whole lot of experience in real estate lately, but I used to quite some time ago, and I found over the years that the boundary problems turned into lawsuits. And I was wondering if he, when he talks about this, might be able to expand on why he thinks they won't be that much of a problem. So, there you go, guys. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any other speakers? All right. That takes us to our correspondence and announcements. Do we have anything? All right. Takes us on to our department head reports.
Why do we not have a board member comment?
Oh, I don't know why. It should be on there.
Excuse me?
I don't know why. It should be on the document.
Would you like a board member comment right now, or do you want?
Well, I would like to, I didn't know that she was going to say anything about this, but I would like to know how I can go about getting a running tally on what's happening on that property. I mentioned it two or three times, nothing happened. I probably wouldn't get a second, but I would like to know what, maybe I will try to do it and see if I can get a second so we can vote on it. I think it's important for us to know how much money we're spending. Thank you.
Mr. Docket, you don't need to get a second. I'll have a, you don't need to get a second. I'll have a running tally prepared of all the expenditures for van curler. I'll try to have that by the end of next week, and I'll have the board, I'll send it out to the board, give the board a few days to take a look at it, and I'll put it online.
Thank you.
I'll put it on my website.
All right. That takes us to our department head report, and keep us in order here. Mr. Bill Wagner is taking care of police and fire this evening, and he's down there. I know. Any questions for Bill?
I don't think I have anything for Bill. I have nothing for fire, if you're asking me.
Sure? Well, anybody. Nothing for fire? Bill, you need to share anything additional from your report?
Yeah, for fire, actually, this afternoon, we were notified by FEMA that we did receive our regional turnout gear grant for somewhere in the area of $275,000, and we'll be sharing that with five or six other departments. So our firefighters, all firefighters, will be getting new coats, pants, boots, gloves, helmets, hoods, the whole, the whole deal. So we were pretty excited about that. And then the other thing is, October 16th will be the police and annual police and fire department open house from 1:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. So that's all I have for fire department, but I do have one action item on the police side.
Hang on one second.
I have something.
Great.
On the police report?
I got it, yeah. Okay. Yep, I'd like to make a motion to approve the Drug Enforcement Task Force Agreement renewal with the, excuse me, the provisional state and local task force agreement between the Drug Enforcement Administration and the Northville Township Police Department effective October 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2017.
I'll support. Thank you.
Chick motion, and Otto supported.
I didn't have my hearing aids on.
It's for the DEA contract.
Okay. Well, I didn't know we were even on the police thing yet. Yes, I have a comment on that.
All right.
I see where you got on here for one year on the plus side, on the minus side of what it costs us. I figured it up, it's $11,000, excuse me, $111,000, $110,000, excuse me, $110,000. But when you went to the other side, the plus side, you conominated into seven years to give us these figures of how much money you collected. So from what I can see here, I think it was for what you added in here on the plus side is seven years. So it would have cost us $770,000 if you would have done the same thing on the, on what it cost us. Do you understand what I'm saying, Jake?
Yep.
You used one year on that, and seven years on the.
I'm just never sure how you're going to want me to do it.
Well, I mean, it seems funny that you, when it comes to, this is what we spent, but then when you say what we collected, you took all seven years.
It appears if you do the math, we're still $400,000 to the good.
Well, I know, I know, but it looks like, when I look at this, I figured it out, and it comes to $110,000, but when you times it times seven, that's quite a bit. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention, that I think we should use apples to apples, not, you know, one year for.
I thought you'd just be glad that we actually put the numbers in there this year.
Well, I usually don't know. I'm not, I'm not glad about this, but thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion that's on the table?
I just have a question.
Yeah.
Well, I do have a question. So we're $400,000 approximately to the good, we still have $247,615 that's outstanding that we haven't received yet?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. Any other further discussion?
Yes, they did, they did stop the whole thing for a while. That could happen again, so.
Yep, for a couple of months.
Excuse me?
For two or three months in the winter.
Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to make sure that we're going to get what they owe us.
Well, even if, even when they stopped it, we were still going to get what they owed us.
Well, they said that they were out of money, and they had the money, they put the money somewhere else, is what I read in the letter, so, thank you.
Okay. We have a motion on the table. Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
That takes us to the wastewater treatment plant, and Tim, any questions for Tim tonight? All right. Thank you, Tim.
Where was the one, excuse me, I'm sorry. Where was the one hookup, Tim?
Where was the one what?
It looks like there was one.
Connection.
Yeah.
Walnut Drive.
Walnut?
On Walnut Drive.
Okay, thank you.
All right. That takes us to the community center, and Tammy's report. Anyone have anything for Tammy, or anything else you want to add, Tammy?
I have nothing to add.
Do have to say, I really enjoy the newsletter that you send out.
Thank you.
Our financial report from our treasurer. Any questions for Mrs. Bronn? All right. Managers report. Any other things you want to add or talk about? Howard, anyone have questions?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Wayne.
Well, my, it says here, "On Main Street Path, the Main Street Path is finished with the exception of the rapid flashing beacons. There should be, they should be installed this month. The project went smoothly. I'm happy with the overall outcome." Well, you know, Howard, if you worked in the private sector and you bid a job at $80,000 and then ended up being $160,000, you'd have been fired. So I don't, I don't think you should be patting yourself on the back on that path that costs us twice as much as it was supposed to.
It did not cost twice as much as it was supposed to, Mr. Docket. That is, it's just not accurate. I'm sorry. The comments from the resident, although I highly respect the sentiment of the comments of, "We need to keep always trying to do a good job of figuring out where costs are and not being foolish with our dollars," this notion that this project was $80,000 over budget is completely infactual. Mr. Rushlow is in the audience. Mr. Rushlow's firm was the engineer on the project. Mr. Rushlow's firm was the entity that bid out the project. When we initially started this project, we didn't have a dollar amount identified. When you asked me the question two or three months ago, I gave you an answer of a very early conversation that we had had, when we ultimately went and did the engineering to identify the cost of the project and the construction, is when we determined that the construction cost of the project was significantly high. Now, I'm not an engineer, and I did the best I could by calling up concrete contractors to get a general number, just to identify whether or not we should even move forward with the project through the Community Development Block Grant Program and know that whether or not we were in the range. And at the time, when those, when I made those phone calls, I got back a number of about 80 grand. That's when we decided we were within the range of the dollars that we had and that we would move forward. Once the full engineering was done, once the analysis on the project was made, it came out, what was the total project cost on the, the bid cost was about 130?
Just under 130.
So the engineer's estimate is a number that we didn't have when we initially started on the project, when I was knocking on doors to try to get the project to qualify. So, and the reality is, you're just, it's just not factual, what you're saying, and I'm, I can only.
Are you saying you didn't, are you saying you didn't say it was 80,000 to me?
No, I did.
Okay, all right, all right.
But I did.
That's what you said, and it ended up being 160?
Yeah, but what I'm saying to you is.
Yes, 130 that you're using is without the beacons, I would imagine.
I can only take so much of.
Well, is it, is it right? Is it 130 plus the beacons?
It was 130 plus the engineering costs of $30,000.
Well, well, it's 160,000.
Is it, is it expensive to engineer municipal projects? Absolutely. There's no question about that. Anybody who works in the municipal sector, frankly, anybody who works in construction will tell you, it is not cheap to engineer projects when you're dealing with multiple governmental entities, multiple issues, utilities, right-of-way issues, various agencies. They're not cheap. It does get expensive. I often joke that a municipality can turn digging a ditch into hundreds of thousands of dollars, where a farmer will literally just take his backhoe and dig the ditch. And if you're in the engineering world, you sort of chuckle at that and get it. But the reality is, if the township wants to do any construction, whether it's this project or any other project for that matter, it's not cheap. It's never going to be cheap. There are multiple layers that we have to deal with. There are multiple issues. Jacob's Rushlow Firm was the firm chosen by the county to engineer the project. The engineering of that firm was roughly $30,000. The project costs were roughly $130,000 in construction. We added the rapid flashing beacons because we wanted to ensure the safety of the children that were walking down there. We did the project in the first place because we wanted to ensure the safety of the rest, the safety of the children walking down Main Street. And when we, when we initially took on the project, we did not think it was going to cost $130,000. We got as much information as we could to understand, that we thought the project costs would be around 80,000 in terms of construction. We had $70,000 at the county. We figured, we've got, we've got enough money to move forward on this project. We started the project, we got it to qualify, we started the engineering. When the engineering was done, the project costs came back at 130,000. That's not atypical for how projects work through municipal entities. If you don't want that to happen, you need to have shovel-ready projects. You need to engineer projects and have them shovel-ready, so you know exactly what the cost is when you apply for the grants. But that's going to.
What I want is, I want a fair price and done for a fair job.
And I agree with you. And if you have, if you have.
And I'm not, and I'm not making up any figures here.
I know you're not.
180 and 160.
But, but you're, you're.
Well, you're doing those finding excuses, Howard.
No, I'm not, because if you want, if you feel like it's not fair, then you call the county and you say that they had an improper bid procedure. If you feel like it's not fair, then you look to Jacob Rushlow's firm, and you say to Jacob Rushlow's firm, "Your firm didn't abide by your obligation to bid the project out accordingly." So if you think that this is not fair, what you're saying is that OHM didn't bid it out well, and the county didn't choose their engineer well.
Well, I'm coming to you, Howard.
Now, I understand that, but I'm just, there's only so much, there's only so much negativity and misinformation that should.
This is not misinformation.
All right. Is anything else for Howard? All right, let's move.
I had two things.
Yes.
So for the van curler property on the fences, have we asked him to move the fences, or is it not an issue at all to whether the fences are there or not?
We have not asked him to move the fences. The total encroachment, again, this is something that Mr. Docket brought up, or was brought up earlier, the total encroachment is .53 acres of 28. Okay.
.08 acres.
Point, I thought it was .53.
No.
.08 acres of a total of 28. So we do have some fence encroachments, but they're very small, and that would be your guys' decision tonight as to how you want to handle that.
So if the township doesn't care of the .08 land, I'm just speaking this out.
Sure.
It would be the township that would have a lawsuit against those people, not the other way around?
Probably not a lawsuit. If we moved forward with the encroachment in place, you, in Michigan, if you have an encroachment and you haven't done anything about the encroachment for 15 years, you have what they call a prescriptive easement. So if we take possession of the property, or vote to move forward of taking possession of the property, and this board says, "We're not going to do anything about the encroachments," then for all intensive purposes, you've sort of allowed that property to be given back to the person that's encroaching on it. We'll, and later on in the agenda, that's obviously going to be a significant topic of conversation as to what those encroachments are and what their impacts are. So, but does that answer your question?
Yep, that does. The other one had to do with the unveiling of the van curler property.
Sure.
That's for the October 23rd?
Yes.
Is that correct?
That's a Sunday.
A few people have asked me about it. What are the plans for it?
So, so far, and we, we need as much help and as much support and as much volunteerism as we can get. So far, we have a trunk-or-treat plan. We have a pumpkin, color, not coloring, but decorate the pumpkin, decorate pumpkins for kids. We'll have a, a little parade for the kids in costumes. The band, the Whitmore Lake High School Band is planning on coming. I believe Kiwanis may be selling hot dogs, but Jackie, you may know more about that.
Uh huh.
I was trying to convince the group to buy the Costco hot dogs, the good old beef kinds, you know, just to throw that out there.
Okay.
And.
Thank you, Howard.
You're welcome.
Costco don't sell their hot dogs.
Huh?
I don't think they sell it to the public.
Oh, no, no, the ones that you buy in the bulk, in act, actually, anyway.
The ones they serve.
I just, I just wanted to have a little bit of funny commentary to break up the meeting. So we've got a lot of things going on, and any, anybody that wants to be involved in that, we would love your support. We think that we are all very excited about this property and its impact on the community, and we want to let everybody know that. So I'm sure I've forgotten a few things already.
Who should people reach out to if they want to help?
Right now, you can either go through me, or you can go through Barb Griffith. It is being organized and planned by the Downtown Planning Group.
I have one question.
Go ahead, Chick.
For the attorney, maybe, what does this do to our title insurance? I mean, if, if we accept this the way it is now, it's not going to be right on the title insurance, is that right?
Are you saying with regard to the encroachments?
Yeah.
They'll take an exception to the encroachments?
They won't insure them, although there was.
They won't insure the .08 acres of property?
That's what I.
Right.
Okay.
All right, anything else? All right, that takes us to our ZBA report. Janet, or Jackie, anything?
Yeah, we had a ZBA meeting on August 15th. There was a case that brought, was brought to us by Julio Kogo on East Shore Drive, and this was for a driveway variance in regards to how the lot, or what type of variance we should provide to them, and we did give them a variance on that.
All right. Planning Commission report. Anything, Janet?
The Planning Commission met on September 7th. Commissioners, continued discussion on eliminating the Enterprise Service District zoning and combining and converting it to general commercial zoning. This will provide more opportunities to attract more option, more business, and allow current business more options to improve or grow their business. There is also a discussion on our next three goals and the establishment of an ad hoc group to gather information on densities in the ag area, and agricultural survey to learn the economic impact of agriculture in the township, and the PDR and TDR viability in the township for the purpose of preserving farmland and open space properties.
All right. Thank you. Parks and Rec, Tracy, you got anything?
Nothing that's not in the manager's report. We are due to meet this Thursday.
Great. Thank you. Okay, that takes us on to our agenda items. Number one is the acceptance of the Whitmore Lake Special Assessment District easement at 6350 Whitmore Lake Road. I'll put a motion out there to approve the easement for the property at 6350 Whitmore Lake Road as presented. fifty Whitmore Lake Road as presented.
Okay, okay.
Ingsstrom motion and chick supported, discussion.
Oh, yeah, could, could you give us just a synopsis, Howard?
Synopsis of this is that the, one of the companies in the Whitmore Lake SAD initially indicated that they did not need to hook up to the, the sewer district and then after the fact, they indicated that there may have been some miscommunication between them and the, and the contractor and the engineering company and they did want to hook up. And we did not feel as there was any detriment to any of the property owners in the district. We didn't feel, and we have confirmed that there is no cost impact to the additional hookup and we think it's appropriate to allow for the businesses broadscape, broadscape to hook up to the Whitmore Lake Sewer Assessment District. And so we are recommending approval that you accept the permanent non-exclusive easement for public-private utilities for broadscape.
Anyone else? There's a motion on the table, those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Takes us on to number two, the acceptance of the Barker Road non-motorized path easement. So I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the non-motorized path easement for three sixty-five Barker Road as presented.
I support.
Thank you. Ingsstrom motioned and auto-supported. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Takes us to number three, the Barker Road non-motorized path construction bids.
Um, if I may, Madam Supervisor?
Oh, floor's yours.
Thank you. So we now have three of the required five easements for the construction of the non-motorized path. Previously, given the board's wishes, that allows us at this point to move for bid. We will still work on the other existing two easements. We do not have all the easements. Of the four permanent easements, we only have two. If you are in agreement, I would request an authorization to go to bid. Obviously, if something comes up, if there's any unexpected, I'll sort of always have an executive sort of oversight to this to, to make sure that we're moving forward in an appropriate and, uh, kind of appropriate and, and hopefully quick path to try to get this done as soon as possible, but we won't jump any hoops if there's going to be a detriment to the project. So that being said, if, if you guys are in agreement with moving forward with three of the five easements that we currently have, I would say a, a vote to authorize me to give Tetra Tech the go-ahead to go out to bid. I don't have a timeline yet of when bids will be back and in the process, I will continuously try to get the additional two easements. So you know, and so Mr. Dockett, I want to make sure this is very clear, because in the past, you've had an issue with change orders. If we move forward in this way and we go out to bid with the two, with three of the five easements that we have and we get easements after the fact, we will have change orders on this project related to the change in the construction. It is unavoidable. I just want that to be very clear so that the actual bid amount, when it comes in, will not necessarily be the final price of the project because the project bound, the, the construction details may in fact change. So I just want you to be clear on that. Yes, sir?
The two that were not good, that we don't have?
Correct.
Are we going across, is that going to be a concrete path or we're not going to?
Those will be discussions that will be had with the board. Most of those discussions have been had with the board in closed session, Mr. Dockett. So, what I can tell you publicly, without giving away the privilege, is I will continue to try to get those easements and as soon as I have any information related to that, I will call the board in closed session to discuss real estate acquisition as we have been doing for the past year probably at this point.
Howard, would they ever consider, would we ever consider including those easements as part of the overall bid in the event that we would not have to do a change order?
I can talk with Brian about that and, and find out if they can do a sort of hypothetical bid, is that what you're getting at? Yeah, I, I can ask for that analysis. Legally, I don't think it could be in the bid because a bid document and bid bonds and all of that type of stuff-
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yeah, there's, there, but I think that we could ask the contractor to give a good faith estimate of a hypothetical bid. It just wouldn't be bounded-
So at least we know what the, what the change order would be or an approximate-
That's right.
Amount, okay.
We just, we wouldn't be able to legally bind the contractor to it.
Can I say something? I just wanted to thank Howard for all his hard work on getting these easements. I think that some people have come forward and commented on this path, said that it's been a financial hardship on the township, costed more than it should and even accused the board of chicanery and ineptitude. And when this path was started, there was some due diligence done, but the due diligence to get the easements across the private property was evidently not looked at at all, at least in everything that I've known and learned about this project over months and months. And those are the most difficult easements to get. Easements across public property, drains, bridges, those, those are all the easy ones. The hard ones are the private property and there should have been some signed documents giving us those easements right when the project started. So Howard, thank you for the difficult task of, it was like running into a brick wall, really. So, thank you, Howard.
I have another question. In regards to the change order, could we, I'm trying to get to a point, could we, when we get the bids in, could we at the time of the board create a potful of money that would be the change order?
Yes.
Say, like we would say, two hundred or, you know, ten thousand or fifteen thousand authorized?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
And if, you know, Mr. Rushlow is in the audience, he is not the engineer on the project, but if you had some general engineering-related questions related to change orders and things of that nature, we could certainly ask. But yes, you can do exactly what you just asked.
Because working in IT, that's exactly what we do and that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah, so pre-authorize me to sign change orders.
Um, I'll make a motion to approve Township Manager Howard Fink to go up to bid on the non-motorized path. Ingsstrom motioned and chick supported. Any further discussion? Those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. It takes us to number four, the Van Curler property, as we've already touched on a few of the things of it. Howard, you want to take the floor on that?
Yeah, I can. I cannot contain my excitement of this property. It has been, it has been a vision of this community for twenty to thirty years. I mean, there, we're at the finish line. It's coming to fruition of having community access to Lake Michigan. We're not exactly sure what that access will look like, whether it's swimming or not.
Lake, Lake Whitmore.
What did I say?
Michigan.
Oh, community access to-
But if you want, but if you want to have that vision of our lake, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, right. To, there you go. To Whitmore Lake. See, that was even better than my hot dog joke earlier.
On a roll.
So here's what I would say. We have a little bit of encroachment issues. We have some encroachment issues on the Aldente. It's basically the Aldente fence, where the Aldente fence is located and there's a fence kind of behind the dentist or dentist. It's really more towards the dentist than it is towards Marco's Pizza. And then there's one other small encroachment. I just don't think that it's worth dealing with trying to have those property owners vacate that property to slow down or hold up the closing. That's my personal opinion. Ultimately, that's a business decision by the board. I'm just, my personal opinion is it's probably not worth it. They probably have a prescriptive easement because it's been there for more than fifteen years. And we're talking about anywhere between three feet and seven feet with respect to the Aldente encroachment on the fence line. There is a little bit of encroachment on the lakefront, obviously, but it's really small when it gets to the lake. It's like three feet, isn't it?
Five.
Five feet on the lake?
Closest.
Closest to the lake. Maybe that's something that you want to consider sending a letter on. So, but anyway, those are business decisions by the board. There is a memo in your packet from OHM related to those three encroachments. They are seven eight, seven A, seven B, and seven C. And number eight, there is a, there is a foundation of a billboard on the property. So we did not, we were not aware of that previously. One through six are administrative surveying issues that we have already worked out and that is reflected in the title commitment and in the new ALTA survey that you have in front of you. And again, Jacob's here to, to attest to that as well. So, really, we are at the finish line and it is now your decision on if we go to close or if we want to address some of the encroachments. Did I, is there anything you wanted to add?
So the foundation of the billboard is just, there's no billboard, it's just foundation, right? Can't we just remove it or do we have to?
I don't know how big the pylon is.
Oh.
How far does it probably go down? Jacob, you want to come up?
Yeah.
It's probably ten feet, isn't it?
Yeah, I mean, it depends exactly what, excuse me, depends exactly how, I guess, how big the billboard was. It's going to go at least forty-two to forty-eight inches below the frost line. Beyond that, it really depends on what was it supporting and how deep that foundation goes, but it's not going to be any shallower than four feet.
But it's not like owned by anybody, right? It's just there, right?
That, I don't know. I mean, ownership wasn't something that was disclosed for that little piece of concrete. It's just an abandoned billboard foundation that happens to be sitting on the corner there next to the freeway. So we just noted it, it was noted by the surveyor, we noticed it on the plan and wanted to bring it to your attention.
Is it, is it behind the gas station, behind the, the marina or, or behind the other building?
It is, I can show it to you on the map if you'd like, but it's in the corner of what's called parcel five on the ALTA survey, the very north end, closest to the US twenty-three off-ramp right-of-way line.
Parcel five, is it?
I can't read.
You need a magnifying glass.
That's, that's Aldente and that's the rush, and that's the gas station. So, so, yeah.
You remember what it was?
Probably was for the gas station.
No, I'm not. Yeah. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a big map and you have it printed on a very small piece of paper, so I think-
Yeah, we didn't get one as big as yours.
Yeah. Um, you know, if there's any questions on the memo that we have prepared on September eighth, I'd be happy to answer those. I mean, just to give a brief, I guess, update since what had transpired from last week. Items one through six were more technical clarifications on discrepancies between the descriptions and the plan, the ALTA survey plan. Those were all cleaned up by the company that did the survey, Atwell Group, and a revised plan was sent over, actually today, the most current one, was dated nine thirteen, addressing those first six comments. The last two comments in my memo are really just more for informational and your awareness that there are those encroachments plus the billboard footing on that one parcel. And Howard was correct, when we checked the areas, the total acreage of the encroachments was point zero eight acres, which is about, if you look at the total acreage of the site, you're looking at about point three-four percent of the combined parcels.
I'd like to make a comment. As far as the encroachments, since it's so small, I would not, I mean, wouldn't each of those business owners have to have their own survey done in order to remove anything or change anything on their property?
With regards to-
Those fences.
Those fences?
Yeah.
You know, I think in what Mr. Fink had mentioned, with there being a prescriptive easement potentially over that area of land, it would probably just be a discussion between the township and those property owners, when and if they can remove those or how that's done, if they do want to remove those fences in the future, or I guess maintain or repair them as needed.
Um, I, I'm not putting my lawyer hat on, but I'm kind of putting my lawyer hat on. It, it's not a prescriptive easement, it's, it's adverse possession. And I'm almost a hundred percent certain that fifteen years has in fact passed and the township doesn't have any rights to ask anybody to move those fences. Based on what I'm, I'm looking at, I, I'm still going to vote in favor to close because we're talking about such a small level of encroachment, but I, there, there's really no percentage in, in us trying to assert ownership over this partic, these, these encroachments that, that, that bus has left. However, it might be a good idea with regard to, as you get closer to the lake, we may approach that property owner and simply ask and say, listen, you need, we would like you to consider being a good citizen of the township and perhaps moving your fence or relocating your fence. But i- if we're talking about what to do about the encroachments, there isn't much to do. It's either close or don't close and understand that we don't own that land.
Is it the north fence? Is there a fence on the north side or the south side?
Both.
On the lake?
Uh, there's a, there's a fence on the lakeside and then there's a fence on the non-lake side.
Yeah, I understand that, but, but is it on the south side? In other words, does it go with Dutch Weber's house that's across the street?
Oh, it's, it's-
Or does it go to the restaurant?
No, it's, it's on the, it's on the southern part of the property, along the southern part of Aldente.
Okay.
So it's closest to-
Us, now.
Right.
South side, yeah.
It's on the south side of the property, so it's closest to the post office.
Yeah.
Rather than be on the tavern side of the Aldente.
Well, I don't, I, I agree with Tracy and I'm ready to move forward on the closing, but we already have a motion for allowing the closing. Do you need anything tonight or go?
I, I think that we would just be looking for a, a motion that notwithstanding the encroachments to go ahead and close.
Thank you, Jac, Jacob. No one has anything else for him, right? Okay, thank you so much for coming tonight.
I will make a motion to authorize the Township Manager and/or, uh, legal counsel to proceed to closing in spite of the encroachments that have been brought to our attention today.
I support.
Thomas motion, auto-supported.
Whoa.
Chick.
Yes.
Ron.
Yes.
Dockett.
No.
Ingsstrom, yes. Westover.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Thomas.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, that takes us to number five of the agenda item and that's the review, review of the drainage district boundaries that the Drain Commissioner has presented.
So as you recall, from about a year and a half ago-
Yes.
-we had a drainage district that we were one aware of. The previous board had had conversations with the Water Commissioner, with the Drain Commissioner regarding it. To be, to be frank and to be, and to be clear, I am completely and one hundred percent against how the statute is written with respect to the power of the Drain Commissioner. Not to say that I dislike or disapprove of the work that the Washtenaw County Drain Commissioner is doing, I just think that the statute is a very old statute and it doesn't provide a lot of oversight into, into the cost structure of how these, of how these drainage- My personal opinion is this is not one of those districts that we need to fight because of the incredibly small impact. And there is benefit, significant benefit, to the residents and to the area around it. But I wanted to bring it to your attention because frankly, I think it's now good policy to bring all of these districts to the attention of the board so that you can make the business decision as to when you think it's appropriate to object and to at least legally get involved with the determination of benefit, which is a legal process the county goes through. So while I don't think that this is one that we should fight, I wanted to bring it to your attention because ultimately, I believe it really is the choice of the board. As you recall, a few years ago, or maybe last year, the assessment on the Earhart Road drain issue will be roughly $10,000 to $12,000 annually for the township. And that's not including the cost of residents and their payments. And we had multiple conversations about that issue, as you recall, both in open session and some in closed session as well.
So what do they base their fees on? What exactly are we paying for?
Well, so if you flip to page two of the memo, not my memo, but of the document that you have in your packet, and you also flip to the last page, you'll see the acreage that exists within Northfield Township, the lands added and the lands removed. And so in totality, there's a little bit more land that has been added in Northfield Township. What they do, and it's not, it's a somewhat complicated analysis that's done, and it's not necessarily an analysis that's done exactly the same each and every time, but essentially, they analyze the percentage benefit overall to the township. And so that may be sort of roads benefit. That may be sort of general lands that are not owned by landowners that ultimately ends up getting assessed back to the benefit of the township. There may be other benefits that they see on the township that they would not include, for example, on the road commission or the residents. And so what happens is they come up with this assessment approach and percentages. And I'm not an expert in the Drain Commission and the Drain statute. Again, I think probably Jacob could speak a little bit more detail to this issue. But they've come up with a formula, and that formula, as it relates to the Skandin Lake and Branch drain, is on page two. It looks like this, okay? And you see, Northfield is B. That is our tax assessment, our property tax delineation B. C would be, in this case, I believe Webster, thank you. And so what they're saying is that there is a township at large benefit of 6.06%, which adds up to about $502. So I'm bringing this to your attention, partially because I don't really think that there's any action to have on this particular drain, but I wanted to get it sort of ingrained that these really should ultimately be Board of Trustees decisions because they end up becoming business, financial, budgetary issues in perpetuity because these districts exist in perpetuity. The maintenance of them exist in perpetuity. Yes, Mr. Dockett?
I think it's about 50 acres more. I kind of figured it out. It's about 250 on the removal side and about 300 on the adding side. So that's about 50 acres more.
Right. And let me just be clear, it's a very small increase. And let me also be clear, we have a great relationship with the County Drain Commissioner, and he's doing a great job, and he does a phenomenal job of dealing with his resources. It's not Evan Pratt that I have an issue with, or Evan Pratt's office. It's the statute and how the statute allows for the creation of these districts and the oversight that exists on them.
Yeah, we really got to the cleaners on the Earhart one.
Huh?
We really got to the cleaners on the Earhart one. Hundred thousand or something.
It was about 100,000 for the township benefit over 20, over 10 years. The maintenance of that drain will continue, obviously. There will always be a maintenance.
So do we need to vote on anything? It doesn't look like we do, but.
I would say, you know, you're not, you're going to vote not to move forward because, so if you, for example, if you wanted to move forward, all right, so then there's a legal process of moving forward. And that legal process of moving forward is to dispute the benefit and essentially go to the day of review, indicate you're going to dispute the benefit, and then file in probate courts, which it's, again, that indicates how odd the statute is. You file in probate court to reserve your rights to essentially appeal and fight. So I would suggest that a motion be made to, that you are not going to do that in this case.
Howard, I know that it's $502, but I'm just wondering, what was it before?
Oh, it's $502.
Seventy-seven cents.
Seventy-seven cents. But what was it before?
Last year, it was $502.
Oh, well then.
So it'll go up to $600 or $550 or something like that. Again, I'm not bringing this to your attention because I think we ought to do something about this particular issue. I'm bringing this to your attention because I think in future, in future situations, the board just needs to be aware of this because it does have a significant budget impact in perpetuity.
Is there something that tells us how much more it is, or no? Is there a figure?
I just, I didn't spend that much time trying to calculate it because it was going to be minimal.
Okay, I'll make the motion to not to object the costs for the annual maintenance fee for the Skadian Lake and Branch drain.
At this time.
At this time.
Court.
Auto motion and Thomas supported. Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion passes. Takes us onto our discussion items of the evening. Number one, the trail plan.
Very quickly, so this in some ways relates actually to the issues that I talked about earlier and are brought up with respect to cost and understanding the cost of projects. We really do need a trail plan in this community. It has been talked about by the residents, and it has been indicated from the residents that trails are a focus, paths are a focus in general, both in the Hamlet area and in the rural areas. And I think that that's going to continue. I think that that needs to essentially be recognized by the board. In the existing Parks and Rec master plan, we do indicate that we need to create a trails plan. We just did not have enough energy to do that because that master plan was done from volunteers and myself as staff. We did not hire that out. Uh-huh?
I didn't say. Not that you were supposed to do.
Oh, okay. So we just, we didn't have the time and energy to really do that. So, but I do think we need to. And the next discussion item will be a discussion on a potential Pontiac Trail, non-motorized path. But one of the things that a trail plan will do is it'll give you a sense of cost of some of these trails, not, obviously, detailed engineering costs, but it'll give you an overall, general sense of cost, a little better than somebody like me can do by calling up some contractors. The other thing it'll do is it'll identify easements and right-of-way issues. So you understand where trails are, where trails are a possibility. You understand what trails are low-hanging fruit that can be built rather quickly as opposed to trails that are going to create a great deal of energy and effort in order to get property acquisition because property acquisition is always incredibly expensive in the process. So those are just a few things that it'll help you understand. It'll help you understand the topography and where trails can go. I recommend that, and I'm not saying you do this tonight, but I recommend that you start moving forward with a trail plan. And I think it's appropriate to do so now, not tonight, but we can talk about it tonight and maybe have some stuff for the next meeting. My personal opinion, and this is me, people will disagree, but I have my reasons. I do believe that trail plans should be done by engineering firms, not planning firms. I think the critical issue with trail planning is related to the engineering details and specifications of various trails. Right-of-way issues, property issues, topography issues, utility issues, things of that nature. I do not believe the critical issue of trail planning has to do with what a trail maybe looks like, or how big a trail could be, or if there are benches on a trail and those kind of things, which is more of a planning function. Not to say that planning firms can't do trail plans, but in my personal opinion, I think it's more relevant and would be a better value to the township to have an engineering firm do it because you can get some of those initial issues of whether or not a trail is possible and feasible out of the way. You know how I feel about our existing firms. I think they do good work. I think OHM does great work with respect to trails. I do believe they did a very good job with respect to the trail at, on Main Street. So there are other.
I don't agree with that.
I know that. There are other engineering firms that do very good work on trails. StanTech is one.
Well, we never try them, Howard.
And I think.
You use the same one, year after year after year.
I think this is one of those where you probably should bid it out. I think this is a proposal and something that should be bid out. And we can talk about bid specifications later. So that is my report.
Go ahead, Wade.
I would say people should, we should give a copy of this to everybody in the audience also. All this is, is a bunch of engineers, consultants, landscapers, invoice writers. Everything on here is plus fees, plus services. It's a contract that these people, these do-gooders, are trying to get us to sign, and it's an open-ended thing that there, it would, it's hard telling what it would cost.
You don't have a contract in your packet on a trail.
I have that.
That's the next item on the agenda. You're one step ahead of yourself.
Well, you just said some, you said this name.
I said StanTech is an organization that you might want to consider for a trail plan. I think OHM would do a great job, knowing that they.
Well, I know you think OHM does it because you never use anybody else.
We use Tetra-Tec.
Go ahead, Dan.
Hi, yep. I am actually very happy to see this coming before the board. As long as I've been on the planning commission, we've been talking about a trail plan. And actually, it is on one of our goals after we get through our agricultural survey, or I guess we could do it in conjunction with. But we've also always been very, very close to the Lakeland Trail head. And one of the thoughts at one time was that if we connected to that one, that we could do a trailhead in downtown Whitmore Lake, and that would bring a lot of people and business into the township as well. So I'm very happy to see this on the agenda. And the public's been asking for it for a very long time, and everybody knows, everybody's out there biking. We see them on Seven Mile all the time, which is not a trail plan area and dangerous, so we need to move them over to where they can go. So thank you for doing that.
Jacob, did you have something?
No, I'm just shaking my head.
Was it, were you shaking that door yet?
Yes.
So just to potentially move us along, maybe next steps, is there any other comments? I'm sorry. Nothing? Okay, so maybe potentially next steps, would you like me to put together a request for proposals and a detail of what we would analyze the bids on, the way we basically did for the non-motorized path? We came up with a sort of ranking of how we would analyze and rank the bids and a request for proposal for a trails plan.
So Howard, now I have a question.
Sure.
So usually, the trails align with a road, or does it go down by an easement? Is that usually how they're created?
So typically, there are two ways that you can get property acquisitions. So if the county road commission has existing right-of-way, which is essentially, when we say right-of-way, we're basically talking about property that they own but that they haven't built on. So it looks like, when you go down the street, it looks like it's actually private property, but in fact, it's owned by the county road commission if they ever wanted to expand the road. So one question is, you know, is there existing right-of-way where you just go through the county road commission and you build your path within the county right-of-way? Then if you don't have right-of-way, the other option is to gain an easement from the property owner. And you guys are very familiar with that property, that strategy. A third option is you could pay for right-of-way yourself. You could just try to buy property, fee simple title to property. There are other entities that potentially could have easements or right-of-way where you may be able to build a path in. So for example, if you are along a railroad track, the railroad company may have either their own right-of-way, or they may have an easement that you could theoretically build a path within. So there are some variables to it, but those are the general principles.
Our railroad tracks are owned by the state of Michigan, all of them.
Aren't owned by what?
The state of Michigan, M.D.
So I know we kind of put one and two together on our discussion items, or did you want to talk further on the Pontiac Trail, Salem Township one?
No, I think they're separate. I mean, I'd like to discuss the Pontiac Trail one, but, I mean, one is a specific trail that other communities have approached us on, that they would like to partner with us, and the other is an overall trail plan. So.
I think that, you know, none of us may be on the next board. I don't think we should be making these decisions for, you can get anything you want from this board, Howard. I would like to see us wait till the next board.
Is there a time restraint for this?
For putting out an RFP for a trail plan?
No, for the proposal on the Pontiac Trail one.
That is, I'm sorry, I'm not trying to avoid the question, but that's a whole separate discussion. I don't know if there's going to be a timeline on that one, Jackie.
Okay. I thought we moved on.
Sorry.
I thought we moved on to the next, the last.
Oh, I didn't know, how do you guys, do you guys want me to prepare an RFP for a trail plan and an analysis of how we would analyze the bids?
I agree with Mr. Dockett. Just wait. I don't know how anyone else feels.
I kind of feel that we're still the board, and we can make decisions. And if the next board, or it doesn't want to do it, they can always nix it. It's, we have the authority to do that.
And we'll keep on working for our pay.
Right.
I agree. Otherwise, why are we here?
So if you guys want me to put out an RFP which doesn't bind you to anything, it just, it just gets proposals in, or if you want me to start, let's not put out the RFP. If you want me to start writing the RFP and writing the document of how we will analyze the bids, a motion on that would be good. It's, obviously, that doesn't advocate anyone to spending any dollars at this time. Just getting an RFP written and getting documents created. And I'll bring it back.
So I'll make a motion to direct Howard to start writing an RFP for a trail plan. And what else was it?
And a document to analyze how we would, or a document to determine how we would analyze the bids.
Okay, and a document to determine how we would analyze the plan.
It's obviously, that's, doesn't advocate anyone to spending any dollars at this time. Just getting an RFP written and getting documents created. And I'll bring it back.
So I'll make a motion to direct Howard to start writing an RFP for a trail plan, and, um, what else was it?
Uh, and a, a, a document to analyze how we would, uh, or a document to determine how we would analyze the bids.
Okay, and a document to determine how we would analyze the plan. Thank you.
Bids.
The bids.
The bids, yeah. I support.
Did you get that, Lisa? I'm sorry. Did you get it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I supported.
Yep, so chick motion, auto supported. Any further discussion? Those in favor?
I will call a vote, please.
Thomas?
Yes.
Auto?
Yes.
Uh, Westover?
Yes.
Uh, Inkstrom, yes. Uh, auto, um, Dockett?
No.
Um, Bronn?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Thank you.
So now on to...
Our intermixing, uh, discussion item number two.
Yes. So on to the Pontiac Trail Non-Motorized Path. So we were, um, uh, contacted by Salem Township, uh, one of the trustees from Salem Township, um, and they contacted us in Ann Arbor Township and would like to, um, uh, would like to potentially move forward with the feasibility study of the Pontiac Trail Non-Motorized Path, uh, or a path along Pontiac Trail. Now, just so you know, uh, a, a trail plan and a feasibility study are two completely different things, okay? A trail plan is gonna have a general overview of where we need trails to be, a sense of how likely and possible those trail developments are, a general sense of cost. This kind of feasibility study is a, a greater level of detail than what a trail plan would give you. This particular trail, okay, if it got built, is probably north of $7 million. Maybe it gets above 10. Um, just to give you a sense of cost, the non-motorized path on Barker Road in totality is probably gonna reach about $800, $850,000. So call it just shy of a million, for sake of argument. This is probably 10 times the length of, if not greater, um, than that Barker Road area. This is a very, very long path. This path will never get built without massive federal grants, state grants and dollars. Salem Township is saying, let's take the first step, because they believe that Stantec may be able to assist in getting grant dollars and putting it all together. Um, I think that, um, we don't, I don't, I'm not asking the board to vote on it tonight because it's the first time that you're seeing it, if you don't want to, but I think it's a worthwhile investment to say, let's spend $5,000, which would be a third of the feasibility study, to essentially get us to a potential project that could be shovel-ready, where we could start, um, where we could start applying for grants with other municipal entities. Um, and that obviously determines whether or not you think that that trail is valuable. It'd be a trail that would go along Pontiac Trail, uh, from, um, Salem Township essentially all the way into the city of Ann Arbor.
Would that connect to the border-to-border path in Ann Arbor?
Would it connect to border-to-border?
Well, it, you know, down by, so just off of 14, and their, their dock park down there.
Right there, by Bandemere Park?
Yeah.
That, that is a great, that border-to-border path is really neat.
It is. I don't know, I could find out if it would connect to border-to-border.
They mention it.
Oh, do they?
Well...
It doesn't show on the map.
Doesn't show on the map. I think that's what...
This is the only portion that goes through Northfield, why should we pay $5,000?
I'd have to, I'd have to get back with you on that detail.
And depending on how much it costs, I'd still like to see Seven Mile go through.
Yeah. I know. Um, I mean, what, look, you know, if you wanna have these projects in the pipeline, um, you, you, it's really difficult, almost impossible to go out for grants on these type of projects without doing some level of study and some level of engineering ahead of time. It moves a project from just a vision and something on paper to something that has a level of detail on it, and I'm not even sure that this level of detail will get you to the grant money, but it gets you a start, and if you think that this project is valuable, you're going in with the, you're going in with the study with three other municipalities. Now, the one, the one concern I have is our section of the project is not a third of the full trail, but we decided that we would split the study three ways, 5,000 each. It's a small, it's a potentially small investment that may bear fruit five years from now in a, or three years from now in a really large trail investment. And again, we, we don't have to make the decision tonight. We can think on it if we wish.
All right, this is probably a silly question, but are we talking about a, a path that's separate from the roadbed, or are we talking about a path that's, that's connected to the roadbed?
Probably separate, but that would be borne out in the first level of feasibility analysis. But most likely separate because you have to, the engineering standards require, I believe, four feet minimum, um, between the roadbed and the path, is that right, Jacob?
It really depends on what the road consists of. If it has a shoulder, separation is actually greater than if it has a curb. If you're a curbed road, you can get a little bit closer. Um, and there's also difference between sidewalk and pathways on that separation too, but, so if you have a curb, you're anywhere from about five feet minimum. If you're at a shoulder, you'll have the edge of the surface of the road, a soft shoulder, and then you gotta be five feet from the edge of that soft shoulder, so...
Five feet. Thank you, Jacob.
Yep, you're welcome.
I have something to say.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would like to reiterate my, I'm, I'm reading this thing, it's scary to death if you read, if you don't pay within 30 days, you know, it's, it's a one and a half percent interest, 18%, blah, blah, blah. What I would like to say is, when I read it and look at it, it's a bunch of con, uh, consultants, landscapers, architects, engineers, invoice writers, that's what most of them are good at, they're really good at writing invoices, all these engineers, that's, that's their specialty, are all these engineers and everybody else. 18% per annum, uh, plus fees for services, plus taxes added to all invoices. You really need to read this, the people don't know. And Howard says five years down the road, something he really thinks we need.
Five million?
Huh?
Is that what it said, five?
You said it probably wouldn't happen for five years, I thought that's what you said.
Uh, yeah, probably, three maybe?
Yeah, well...
All right, any other questions for you? Anyone? Nope?
On the next agenda... On the next agenda for voting item, everyone?
All right, that takes us to our second call to the public. Once again, it's an opportunity to gather and share your thoughts. We do limit you to three minutes, and it is not a question-and-answer time. We have our first speaker.
Joan Steyer, 766 Mile. Wanted to thank Howard for going to put, in advance, for putting together the Van Kurler statement, and ask if it might be able to come out with next week, the next board's packet, or your next manager's report, so that the rest of us can see it.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? We have another speaker. Welcome.
Mary Devlin, 9211 Brookside Drive. Um, I wanna talk about the, the Main Street sidewalks, and it was mentioned about, questioned by different people, about the, um, number of dollars that were spent. Having been in management for almost 30 years myself, I have seen what can happen with sidewalks that have been constructed inexpensively, and you have to remember, sometimes you get what you pay for. The other thing that I wanna mention is that when a board member brings up an issue, and Howard is answering, I would suggest that they listen and not be reading paperwork at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else this evening? All right, that takes us to board member comments. Anyone? All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Thank you.